Planning Commission meeting and just begin with a recognition that it is in fact Veterans Day, a day to thank all who have served.
You're here.
Yes.
Excellent. With that, a roll call, please.
Commissioner Moline.
Here.
Commissioner Heffner.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Howe.
Here.
Commissioner Deal.
Here.
Chair Brunnice.
Here. Thank you. I would now entertain a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Yeah.
I.
Opposed? Hearing none. Agenda will be used this evening. With that, then, do we, we have a minutes? No. Don't have last month's.
Should have October fourteenth minutes. Are they not in the?
Oh, yeah, 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 there they are.
They're there.
And fourteen twenty-one. With that, then I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Some move.
Thank you, Deborah, and on second.
Ben, second.
Thank you, Ben. Then we would open the floor for public comment for items that are not on the agenda. If anybody has joined to speak to some issue that is not currently on our agenda, you are more than welcome to speak now. If you're, I don't know if we have any call-ins, but if you're calling in by phone, we'd use the star nine button on your phone, alternatively, the raise hand button within the Zoom functionality. And Lisa, can you help me?
I don't see any hands raised, Chairman. Chair.
Oh, great. Thank you. Then we will move into our first item of business. Whoa, okay, sorry, I'm having a little challenge with my screen here. Okay, there we go. Now, I will now open the public hearing on a request for the Foundry GDP amendment, a request for approval of the Seventh Amendment to the Dakota General Development Plan to allow up to fifty-nine dwelling units and twenty thousand square feet of commercial development. The purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the planning commission. The procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. First, there will be a presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from the planning commission to staff. Next, we will have a presentation and testimony by the applicant, followed by questions from planning commission to the applicant. After these two presentations, members of the public who have joined this meeting by computer or telephone may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak is asked to use the raise hand function if participating by computer or star nine, if calling in by telephone. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. The purpose of public comment is to receive public testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant and staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I will then close the public hearing, and no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. The planning commission will discuss the matter, may approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and address. Do we have proper notification?
Thanks, Chair. Yes, the application met all notice requirements in the code.
Do any planning commission members have any disclosures?
I do, Chairman. I just wanted to mention, as I think other people may, that in the August meeting, I mentioned that I was not in attendance at the June twenty-fourth meeting, but I did watch that video. And I'm not sure if I need to make this announcement or not because I already did in the August meeting, but I did watch the video and review the minutes from the June twenty-fourth hearing.
Thank you very much. And I think that holds true for three or four additional of us. Commissioner Williams.
Yes, and I want to disclose that I live near the property. However, I've been able to be very impartial. And this is, I don't know what, the fourth or fifth iteration that I've heard. And I just wanted to let you know that while I wasn't here for the August twenty-sixth meeting, I watched the entire video, read the minutes, rewatched the June twenty-fourth one, even though I was there, and then watched the city council October fifth video and minutes. So I thought that was all very enlightening. So I just wanted to disclose that.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I will also disclose that I was not present for the August twenty-sixth meeting, but have watched the video. I know there's somebody else out there. Commissioner Moline?
Yep. My, my statement from the previous meeting holds. I've watched everything that I missed and am entirely up to speed.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You bet.
All right. Thank you so much, commissioners, for handling those technicalities. And we are happy to see that everyone is here tonight in attendance and can consider the application in full. So collectively, you have all voted, but this is the first time that we have you all in the room at the same time. So I am going to pull up a PowerPoint presentation for you and just kind of go through a little bit of where we are at this point and what's changed. So again, as stated, we're here to consider the Seventh Amendment to the Dakota General Development Plan and the Second Amendment to the Foundry subdivision agreement. As noted previously, public notices meant per the municipal code. This did receive fresh new notice for this hearing tonight and would receive new notice if and when this advances to city council again. So just to be clear on that. For a little bit of context, as you all are familiar, the site is at the northwest corner of the city of Louisville, near the Lafayette Porter. It is fronted by Highway forty-two, Pascal Road on the north, Calix Avenue on the west, and Summit View Drive on the south, and it's shown here in red. I just also want to state real quick that I do have all of the previous slides from former presentations kind of buried at the back. So if there's any information that we want to go back over tonight, we can. But really, primarily tonight, the focus of the presentation and the conversation will be around what has changed following city council, some of city council's discussion, and then, you know, kind of the rationale in where staff and the applicant are with the reason behind the changes. And so both staff and the applicant will be presenting some new information to you tonight. This slide, we won't go through this, but really, this just describes the background that kind of got us to where we are today. And then, as you all noted, prior to tonight's hearing, we had a planning commission hearing on June twenty-fourth that resulted in a two-two tie, and we brought that back to you again after a continuance on August twelfth to the August twenty-sixth meeting. At that meeting, again, we only had four in attendance, but it did vote for a three-one approval. So I just want to note for the public, you know, that there was some conversation around, maybe it looks like some of these votes and timing of hearings were manipulated in order to make sure that, you know, certain people were in attendance or were not in attendance. And from staff's perspective, planning commission, you know, certainly had the discretion, and they made these decisions through the appropriate channels, through votes and through open dialogue. But also want to note that collectively, if everyone had been in attendance, it would have received a four-two vote if considered by the full commission. So I just wanted to note that for the record, for the public. So, you know, all the commissioners had an opportunity to vote on this application. And while it was in a little bit of different configuration, that is kind of where the votes ended up. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that for the public. Following the planning commission actions, this did receive consideration by city council on October fifth. And so, as you know, there was substantial dialogue and conversation around the application. And the same application that was considered before planning commission went before city council. And so it was the fifty-nine dwelling units, maximum of fifteen thousand square feet of commercial. City council had a lot of discussion and dialogue primarily around the loss of commercial development and the removal entirely of the restriction to require a certain number of units to be occupied by persons fifty-five years of age and older. What they didn't do was give really specific direction, you know, numerically around what they were interested in seeing. But the vote by city council and the decision by city council was that they really would like to see further discussion by planning commission around those two items. And so collectively, they voted to remand this back to you, which does happen from time to time, but certainly is not a common occurrence. And so here we are tonight because of that. So just for a little bit of background, yeah, go ahead.
Can I stop you for a quick second? And can you back it up one slide? I just want to, for the record, to the public, it says collectively, a four-two vote is considered by the full commission. I did not vote August twenty-sixth, and I just want to make that clear that if you are including me as a dissension or what vote, I did not vote. So I just want to say that for the record.
No, absolutely. Thank you. The vote on August twenty-sixth, you know, it did not have Chair Brunnice, and it did not have you, Commissioner Williams, and that was a three-to-one vote based on the people that were in attendance. So, yeah, correct. Thank you for the clarification there. So for a little bit of background, I wanted to provide some context around senior housing and affordable housing within the city of Louisville. And so since this was, you know, a significant portion of the discussion and a pretty considerably, you know, a primary component of the previous approval to include seventy-five percent or twenty-four of the thirty-four, thirty-two units to be required for occupancy by persons fifty-five of years of age and older, wanted to talk about this a little bit. So within the city of Louisville, we do have some units that are designated in some capacity for occupancy by seniors. Within the affordable housing realm, Boulder County Housing Authority has seventy-one units over at Kestrel and thirty-two units, I believe it is, or thirty units, excuse me, at the Lydia Morgan House. And both of those are within Louisville, operated by Boulder County Housing Authority, and those are designated for senior as affordable units. Balfour is, other than that, Balfour is the primary provider for senior retirement, assisted living, and those types of services for senior residents within Louisville. And collectively, all of their properties, I did the math, I think this is close, but they have approximately four hundred units, so just shy of four hundred units for mixed type of senior service for housing there. And so, you know, we do have roughly five hundred housing units that right now are designated or available for seniors. When we look at affordable housing, since this is also a topic that came up, we do have, we have this data when we did the analysis for the affordable housing and the inclusionary housing ordinance. So collectively, in twenty nineteen, Louisville had eighty-six, eighty-seven hundred housing units. Of those, two hundred and seventy-three are designated as affordable. All of our affordable housing units are managed by Boulder County Housing Authority. And so while there may be some that certainly maybe meet market for affordable housing through some rental or maybe are privately managed or maintained or targeted for affordable, these are the only units that we're aware of that are actually kind of deed restricted and designated as affordable housing. And this is roughly three point one percent of Louisville's overall housing stock. And then, as you know, city signed on to the Boulder County Regional Housing affordability goal of twelve percent of total units, which for Louisville would mean about a thousand units, just north of a thousand units, leaving a gap of seven hundred and sixty-nine units. And so because of that, you know, recently this summer, we approved the affordable, or excuse me, excuse me, the inclusionary housing ordinance. This ordinance requires twelve percent provision onsite or fee-in lieu. The ordinance doesn't wait or prioritize a certain manner of provision here. And so really, how that gets met is at city council and planning commission's discretion. But as staff reads that ordinance, it's, the applicant has kind of equal weight and equal opportunity to provide any option within the inclusionary housing ordinance. And so at this time, for this GDP, the applicant's undecided on which way they're going to go, but they will need to comply with this ordinance, which is equivalent to eight units that would be subject for this property. And as noted, it will need to be determined at the time of plat and PUD. And so we would embed the requirement for however there, you know, whichever avenue they go in the subdivision agreement. So we don't have the answer for that on this property at the time, but again, eight units for the foundry. So when we look at the policies that we have in place for why we need to be looking at this and why this is important to the city of Louisville, the primary place where we've pulled policies is within the comprehensive plan. So I'm not going to read all these, but essentially, these are, you know, pushing ten years old now. And we have done some of these, but there's still, I think, still some work to do. But generally, we have a mix of housing policies that support a mix of housing types and prices to meet changing economic, social, and multi-generational needs for those who reside and would like to reside in Louisville. Housing should meet the needs of seniors, empty nesters, disabled renters, first-time homebuyers, and all others by ensuring a variety of housing types, prices, and styles are created and maintained. The rest of these, I think, just kind of go on and talk more about operationalizing and providing these. Finally, I do want to point out a couple of things on here. One says, you know, further down, that we should determine kind of what we need for affordable housing in Louisville. So what are our housing needs? And then finally, how are we going to develop action items in order to meet these goals? And so as far as background to, you know, we passed the Affordable Housing Ordinance in June of twenty twenty-one. City council also wanted to talk about incentivizing options for developers to provide additional affordable housing units within Louisville for development. That what city council's direction to staff was at that time was to pursue a housing study. Because really, at this point, we have a lot of questions about what type of housing is needed in Louisville. Where are our gaps? Is it seniors? Is it young families? Is it rental? Is it for-sale product? It's probably a mix of all of those, but what is that right number? And what do we need to be targeting in order to best meet the needs for Louisville residents and future residents? And then further, city council also wanted to understand what incentives would be the most effective in order to result in development that meets those needs and goals. And so, you know, we have a lot of options we could pursue, like density bonuses, height bonuses, parking waivers, financial incentives through fee waivers or water fees, water tap fees, things like that. But I think city council really wanted an economic analysis to understand what are the costs to the city by utilizing those incentives, and will they actually result in more housing? And so because of all of that, staff will be pursuing a housing study shortly in advance of the comprehensive plan. And so we've talked about this a little bit, but we will be hiring consultants, and we'll be hoping to get all the answers to some of those questions. And then we can immediately spin that into policy support in the comprehensive plan to guide future development. And so from a policy perspective, we have policies on the books today, but we are about to embark on, you know, further deep dive in this area, which will really inform, I think, the specifics for the next ten years to really try and close that gap. As noted, foundry, you know, potentially has eight units on the table. So I think from staff's perspective, there's no need to wait on foundry, per se, for a lot of these housing studies and housing policies, just given the fact that founder's not going to even remotely make up this gap, right? And so this is one opportunity we have to get something started now, but we're going to need to do much, much, much more than just development like this in order to close that gap. So in response to all of that, the applicant has gone back and evaluated kind of their development and their goals. And Mr. Baer will speak more to this, but as to the kind of the what and the how and why they feel comfortable with this amount of increase. But they have proposed an increase in allowance for commercial development to go up to twenty thousand square feet, or fifteen thousand square feet was the maximum before. Oh, I have my bullets backwards here, but I do want to note that the concurrency requirement remains the same. So the concurrency requirement before would have resulted in, you know, the entirety of the fifteen thousand square feet getting built out. The five thousand additional square feet as part of this GDP amendment would be optional. They're not tied to the concurrency, and those would really be market-driven and at the discretion of the developer to be able to go up to an additional five thousand square feet. They did go back and kind of talk with their team and are comfortable at this point. Would like to explore with you all, including a twenty percent requirement for occupancy by persons fifty-five years of age and older, which is really twelve units on this site, where twenty-four was previously required. This would have twelve. And as noted before, we have the eight units that would need to meet the affordable housing. So really, we'd have twenty of the fifty-nine units then be some sort of restriction for occupancy to meet certain needs. And, you know, I think staff has mixed opinions on the effectiveness about these requirements for senior housing. On one hand, there's nothing that says seniors can't opt in to live in these units. A lot of these decisions are driven more by site design, architecture, floor plans, target market, location, things like that. And so a lot of the desire for senior housing can be accommodated just through site design without requiring occupancy by seniors. And so I think staff wants to urge some caution in this discussion with planning commission, just noting that there are pros and cons, I think, to a developer, to the city, by being really aggressive in this manner. So for one, from a staff perspective, it's hard to track over time. You know, we put deed restrictions on the property, but it really relies heavily on existing property owners and future property owners and real estate agents and title agents. And a lot of people have to pay attention to deed restrictions on these so that we don't end up in a position where someone's purchased a property and they're not in compliance, and that becomes an enforcement and potentially illegal issue. And so we can do this, you know, we can put these restrictions in place, but we just want to be thoughtful about making sure that they really are necessary before we go down that path. Further, because of the increase in commercial development, staff reran the numbers for the fiscal model. And not surprisingly, obviously, the fiscal impact model looks better with an additional five thousand square feet of commercial. And so shown in yellow are, again, the first three columns on your left are just the foundry property as a standalone. And then the three columns on the right include that kind of total Dakota area, and so really, the overall GDP area. And so collectively, you know, we haven't gotten to the point where we were previously with the prior foundry application fiscally, but it's certainly better than the previous. And this assumes that the five thousand square feet is built. All fifty-nine units are built, the fifteen thousand square feet, so it's a full build-out, and it assumes a three-year build-out. And so this is really the highest scenario. I didn't update the model for the lowest scenario because really, in that circumstance, the situation wouldn't change. The concurrency requirement's still in place. We assume a slower build-out, and we assume the five thousand square feet never gets built. So I have those slides in the back of the presentation if we want to go there, but I didn't update those. Oh, this should be resolution sixteen. My apologies. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. We can go through any of this in detail, but I'll conclude here and just note that we're recommending approval of resolution sixteen, series twenty twenty-one.
Great. With that, Commissioner Deal, I have some questions.
Yeah, Lisa. Can you talk about the right to develop five thousand additional commercial square feet? What does that do to the density of the property?
So it doesn't do anything to the overall residential density. That residential density doesn't get decreased if he would, you know, if the developer would decide to build the five thousand square feet. From kind of a site planning, parking, layout perspective, there's adequate room on the site to accommodate an additional five thousand square feet. So I should note, the developer didn't update the concept site plan. You know, again, very conceptual. They're reevaluating that anyway, just based on some of the neighborhood feedback. You know, as if this moves forward, I think they do want to listen to the neighbors. And so that likely, that concept site plan would get changed anyway. But I can let the applicant speak more about what an additional five thousand square feet does to potential site design. But from staff's perspective and from the applicant's perspective, this site can still accommodate that square feet.
Okay, there's not a maximum FAR for this person?
No. No, so there's maximum commercial square footage, and there's a number of dwelling units. But this one, this GDP doesn't have an overall FAR that would regulate. You get an additional five thousand square feet of commercial, therefore, your residential units need to be a smaller size. In this case, it's probably going to be regulated through setbacks, through heights, and ultimately through provision of parking, too. So it's all in detention, onsite detention. So it becomes a little bit of a, you know, just kind of a Tetris game so that they can kind of balance all that and get it all to fit on the site.
Okay. Sorry. Thanks.
Thanks.
Commissioner Moline?
Yeah, Lisa, thank you very much. I had a question about, surrounding this discussion about senior housing. Do we have any, and by the way, I'm happy to hear that the city's going to do some more in-depth study on housing in the future. That's, that's good. And I guess my question comes at this point now. Do we have any data that, that leads us to think that we're deficient in, in serving housing for seniors in the town right now?
That's a great question. So do we have any data? I'm not aware of any data. But I'm also not necessarily aware that this is, you know, a high demand or this is, we're completely meeting the need. I mean, I think it's hard to say because we're so short on housing for everyone that people are, they getting the product they want? Or is everybody compromising in order to get into a house? So that's really the goal of the housing study.
Okay, okay. I guess that's, I'll be interested to hear if other commissioners have thoughts about this. But I'm, I, the affordability, just for everybody in the city, is maybe, I don't know, seems like it might, at this point in our country's history, that might be the greater, and you may be alluded to this, you know, that might be the greater need at this point rather than a designation for a particular portion of the property to be senior housing. But I'm really curious to hear what other commissioners have to say about that. So thanks.
Sure.
Commissioner Deal?
Yeah, another follow-up. This, this was disclosed in the city council meeting, and I can't remember it. And maybe just for the record, the applicant had stated the estimated market price for these units. Do you recall what that was? Can you share that?
Um, I don't recall specifically offhand, but the applicant can certainly.
It was five, it was five hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand is what the statement that they gave in the city council meeting.
And that was per kind of duplex unit?
For each individual unit.
Right.
Yeah.
And they spoke to the fact that duplex units would likely be on the lower side, and other was to be on the higher side. So, and that the townhomes would be somewhat different, too. So it was, it was very, you know, broad brushstrokes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
Oh, sorry. I just want to point out that senior housing and fifty-five plus is vastly different. They're two different products. And I would say that, you know, while we always need more senior housing, and that is more like somewhat independent living, assisted living and whatnot, the fifty-five plus of housing, we do not have at all. Whereas like Erie, Longmont, Westminster, Broomfield, all have fifty-five plus restricted housing that they have developed. So I'm just saying that that is the piece that I understood city council sending back to us.
Agreed. I think that was very important to city council, that that be included back within this application.
And I guess, speaking of Commissioner Moline's line of questioning, too, what is the goal of fifty-five plus? So it's not affordability, because these are market rate units that are then restricted to people who are fifty-five and older. And as I approach fifty-five, I wonder why, why a market rate unit, why I would call, what, what, what is the goal of fifty-five plus housing? I'm sure there's a bigger story that I just don't understand.
Well, you know, I think for a little bit of background, I think one of the primary considerations when previous, or, you know, when city council considered this previously in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen was there were, there were some overcrowding concerns at the local schools, right? So I do think that was a big driver, not the, not the only driver, but a primary concern in the public at the time. I mean, at that point, a lot of the steelwrench housing was still coming online, north-end housing was still coming online. BVSD was trying to figure out how to adapt and shift some of their enrollment numbers. And so we did have students in trailers, and I think there was some concern that that could be an ongoing situation. And we certainly had parents at the time that I think were involved in speaking up at these meetings. And so I think it was twofold. I think for one, fifty-five and older, on its face, you're likely going to have very few.
On its face, you're likely going to have very few if any school-aged children in that housing stock, right? So that's one direct way. That a housing development can reduce the impact to local schools. And so I think that was one of the goals. The other goal though, I think, you know, is that. It is a certain housing need. It's typically a certain housing, you know, style and being able to provide for move, you know, empty nesters and local residents to know. That they have a higher likelihood of finding a house that's going to have less, you know, less people that are going to be. Targeting that house. I think that's, you know, that's also a consideration. So I think it was twofold, but I don't want to discount the fact that BVSD overcrowding was a significant part of the discussion previously, but not the only reason.
Great, thank you. Can you actually jump back to your slides?
Yep.
Kind of, I don't know if it was maybe your second one or first one, I'm not sure. And then. If we go back a couple, there we go, whoops.
Which one? Sorry, this, sorry, which topic?
Yeah, so this one. So with the existing, so we're calling them senior here.
They vary. So the BCHA product is a hundred and. One units and at seventy-one at Kestrel, that I think they say senior. On their website, I don't know the specifics if that's fifty-five enough, but they also need to meet income restrictions.
Right, so those are all, those are affordable.
Yes.
And they're rental.
Yes.
Okay, and then Balfour, of course, is privately operated.
Yep. Balfour is a very different animal than, you know, what foundry would be, but I did want to include it on here, but agreed, not, not apples to apples here.
Right, no, no, I appreciate that. So then these fifty-five units. They wouldn't necessarily, because they're, they're not actually either of these, or they are a totally different animal at that point. So, all right. And then when we look at, so when we look at the inclusionary housing ordinance. So we're only looking at the affordable units, the eight affordable units that are proposed for this site that would. Include any of that. I'm wondering if in the, in the recent EDI report, did that address housing at all or we're still looking at? Yeah.
Yeah, so city council considered EDI task force, Equity Diversity Inclusion Task Force brought forth recommendations to city council at their last regular meeting on November first. And one of the five primary considerations was around housing. Housing equity, housing accessibility, housing, you know, access and location and amenities, all of those items, additional of more, you know, addition. Like just more housing. So council didn't adopt any specific action items as a result of the EDI task force, but. Absolutely, EDI recognized that as a, as a big component of where the city needs to do the work, do work.
Okay, and actually I did, I forgot, I knew that they had addressed it some, in some way, but, okay, can I look at the next slide, please? So here where we have the comp plan on, on screen, can you describe just the role kind of generically, not specifically as these principles go, but. As to how the comp plan informs city. Well, our laws, our code, but then also I think this gives a great example here too, where maybe it took a little while, but we had the principle. Of defining citywide goals for affordable. And then in the previous slide, we saw how that had actually come to fruition with the adoption of the. With the adoption of the inclusionary goal.
Absolutely. So yeah, this, the city comprehensive plans are required by state statute. So every community within the state of Colorado and most communities within the nation. Have some version of a comprehensive plan. And those generally are regulatory, they're, excuse me, they're advisory, not regulatory. And so. You can't change an ordinance per se, you can't change a code through adoption of a comp plan, but it can include recommendations. For changes and it basically provides all of the community-led and community-driven. Policy support for kind of the next period of time for a city. And so generally comprehensive plan includes sections around land use, housing and neighborhoods and commercial development and. Parks and recreation and trails and transportation. So they're very broad, pretty high-level. Policies to give guidance for decision-makers over kind of the action items that they need to under, you know, the action items that need to happen in order to meet all of these policies and goals. And so when decision-makers are evaluating, say, a specific application like foundry. There's usually not, it's, it's fairly rare to have very specific guidance in a comprehensive plan. For a specific property, but usually there are policies and principles that directly apply to whatever their, you know, kind of. Whatever the application is in this case, because it has a housing component. And actually the criteria for which we approve PUDs and GDPs basically say consistency with the comprehensive plan. So we do have a direct relationship. To the advisory plan when we adopt regulations, but it's really advisory, sets forth kind of the goals. Sets forth the action items for a set period of years and really that's kind of what we lean on. It provides, I think. Predictability and stability, I think, for understanding what changes may or may not happen in a city in a certain area. And if someone wants to come forth with a request that is not consistent with a comprehensive plan, they need to do an amendment to the comprehensive plan before we could, you know, approve something that's inconsistent with it. Does that, is that in the background?
Thank you, yep. Do we have any other commissioner questions right now? Commissioner Howe and then Commissioner Williams to get to.
Hi Lisa, just to touch on something that Commissioner Brown has just mentioned. So the plus fifty-five, just so I can understand. Is there a requirement for ownership and tenancy or is there an option for fifty-five year and older to own it and rent it out?
So the language, that's a great question. The language in the subdivision agreement, I want to pull it up real quick and just make sure I've got it correct. But I believe it's requirement of occupancy by persons fifty-five years of age and older. So. It doesn't necessarily mean that whoever owns the property needs to, but if whoever owns it isn't older than fifty-five, they could only tenant it out. Or rent it out to someone. Who is. Older than fifty-five, but I need to pull that agreement and then just double check and make sure for you. So I'm scrolling through the packet real quick. Yeah, so the, the language in the, in the existing subdivision agreement and the proposed amendment just says that they should be occupied. And generally, the city doesn't regulate whether or not dwelling units are owner-occupied or rentals.
Doesn't seem like there's a specific time that they could, they could occupy it. I mean, you know, obviously hard to. Think, think ahead, but it could be owned, occupied for a month and then rented out.
Yes.
And then another question, can you just review quickly? And the June. Meeting, there was a lot of discussion about traffic and traffic flow. Would you just touch on that? And explain at least how the change to the five thousand. Square feet and commercial changes the traffic, since that's a new development or a change since the last discussion.
Yeah, so I did not put the entire, so the applicant, you can see I pull up the staff report here. I don't have a slide for this. The applicant did a kind of a minor update to the traffic study that was approved originally to understand the trip generation that would occur with the additional five thousand square feet. So they didn't necessarily update the entirety of it, but we do have a little bit of a baseline of understanding the changes. What's interesting about this is, as it relates to timing, is that the ITE manual, the Institute of Traffic Engineers updated. Their overall manual, which forms the basis for assumptions for most traffic studies. We didn't deviate from ITE on this one. Sometimes we do if it's a large development and this one that. You know, the traffic engineer, you know, use more of kind of your out-of-the-box ITE. And so that updated between the previous one and this one. But that being said. So things shifted a little bit. The overall trip generation from the previous one went down a little bit, but the AM and PM peaks actually went up a little bit. So outlined in yellow. Is the changes that were submitted with this most recent change as it relates to traffic. But generally.
Seems like a slight increase.
Yeah, and I think it's just pretty negligible in all reality for what residents would experience with the overall daily trips. The AM and PM peak is, you know, the AM peak went up a little bit, PM peak went up slightly. But not to the degree that it would trigger any transportation improvements or, or things like that as a result of the increase.
Thank you.
So I'd like to point out on the fifty-five plus housing type of product that we have very, very few of. What that entails, it's zero entry. Wide hallways, main floor masters, main floor living. And that's the, the product piece that. We don't have, town or the city of Louisville does not have very much of. And I, you know, that's the piece that we were given to task from city council. So I just wanted to point out what specifically that, that, that is.
No, that's excellent. And I agree with you. I think that there's design considerations that could happen independent or in conjunction with, you know, an actual formal. Deed restriction to require it, right? So you can also drive who is attracted and who would like to live in a development just strictly by design.
And Lisa, can you tell us, so does a requirement for fifty-five plus, it doesn't include, include any of those design requirements though, right? It is simply that it must be, and to clarify from before, it must be occupied. At least by one person who is fifty-five or older.
Yep, that's right. And that would be in perpetuity. So I think the intent of that is that that runs forever with the land. It would transfer owners. It's not just kind of day one and then, but it does require. You know, people paying attention to that deed restriction, potentially including the city, you know, enforcing that if someone kind of goes sideways with it. But no, the requirement doesn't include design. But I think if there is a requirement for occupancy, it's in the best interest of the developer to build product that actually, you know, would meet that need. So. You could assume that would happen, but it's not embedded in the requirements.
Okay.
But we do have understanding from other cities how they enforce that restriction and what their policies are and how they enact them.
It's not a new thing. It wouldn't, we're not, we're not groundbreaking here. It's on the books in other places. So we just would have to get our arms around it. That's correct.
Commissioner Moline.
And this, I'm just continuing with this part of the discussion here. The, the reason that. So it's, so we're, we're not talking about senior housing as defined by the comprehensive plan. We're talking about fifty-five and older and that, the reason we're talking about it for this site was because it has been an expectation. And was part of the previous subdivision agreements for this, for this particular parcel. That's, that's. I'm just looking for a kind of a confirmation that that's why this is. That's why we're talking about it for this parcel was because of previous proposals here, but because we're not.
Yeah, not to say it couldn't have come up organically on its own at this time, but that's really a carry forward from the earlier discussions.
And okay, Lisa, just to, just to clarify on that point. This commission approved the removal of that requirement. City council did not like that. Wanted us to come back to us to reevaluate that.
Yep. Yeah. And so again, the applicants responded and, and would love to share more with you, I think, about why they feel comfortable with the number they're proposing. And how they would intend to, I think, meet that and ultimately hear your feedback tonight before it goes back to city council.
Any additional questions of staff? All right. With that, then I'd like to invite the applicant up to make their presentation, beginning with your name and address, please. And you will be unmuted here shortly.
It should be good to go, Brian.
Good to go?
Yep.
Good evening. Yeah, thank you. Good evening, Brian Bear, seven five five two, North Eighty-third Street, Longmont. So I have a brief presentation. I'm really more here to just answer questions. I think Lisa did a really good job and I appreciate the dialogue. It's been really helpful to hear the different thinking and the different feedback on, on where this is headed. So. Let me just pop up a few slides. Some of them are just to talk more about, as Lisa said. You know, why we're doing, why we're doing what we're doing. But I also wanted to clarify a few things that as I read. You know, we continually read through the different comments that are coming in from the public and, and we have a mailing list of over sixty people that have attended various meetings and we have. We stay in touch with in the neighborhoods. And so wanted to clear up a few things. So let me. Think I just hit share here. Nope. It's saying I'm disabled on screen sharing.
You should be good now.
There we go. There we go. Great. Let me launch this real quick. Here we go. So, you know, that is the big question. I think Lisa mentioned it, you know, why did we make these changes? Well, well, obviously, you know, there's sort of three drivers here. One is the feedback that we've been getting. We've been getting it, we got it, I think, loud and clear from city council. There was also, I think, some discussion of this in, in some of the earlier planning commission meetings. And so although we didn't get. Specific direction of this is what you should do. It was the feedback of go back and reconsider this piece. And come back with something that, that is feasible. I think, you know, we talked in the last meeting about diversity of product. So I'm okay with this because it provides more diversity of product. So, and of course, I'm talking about the fifty-five plus now. And then we went back and read through and we've got, we've continued to get feedback from the community. Largely that feedback was coming from the adjacent neighborhood. And they've been very consistent since the beginning of, of this need of wanting this type of product. And, and, you know, so I think all three of those things together. You know, really started to push us in that direction. And, and so we, we made the change. On the commercial, same thing, but really more just council feedback and planning commission meetings we've had. This has been a common theme about some discomfort with the reduction. And so, you know, we're trying to bring forwards. Ideas and solutions that, you know, sort of get closer to where everybody wants to be. I wanted to make a comment about the concept plan. And it's, it's sort of an obvious, but I'll state it anyway, just because I don't think, I think there's a little bit of a misconception about that. And these things, concept plans are always tricky at this stage. Of the, of the, of the approvals because they're not required, but we like to at least get something out there to engage the community. We think it's healthy. It helps people understand at least a direction. If you never show a concept plan, I think it's really hard for people to get their heads around, well, what are you thinking? And so we really provided that, you know, just to get that going. And I just want more of the public to understand that. That may change, that will change based on the next phase that we go to, which is the PUD amendment. And that's really where we get into. Things that are being discussed tonight, like, you know, what type of units are they going to be and, and how are they going to lay out and things like that? That, that really comes in the next phase and hopefully. Planning commission is, and the community and staff has seen that we, we are flexible and we're willing to reevaluate things and go back to the drawing board. And look at, look at different angles on this. But we also have to deliver a product to the market and the community that is a, is a nice product that. That is something that people are going to want to live in. So we have to balance all of those things. There's also some additional comments about community engagement. And again, I want to drive this home because I'm actually very proud of the community engagement that we've been doing. We've been very open and honest and we've had over sixty people at our presentations, which for this, you know, it's fairly small community. And the local communities around the site, I, that's. I, I, that's, uh, those are fairly big numbers and we've tried to be thoughtful. And again, down below, you see a lot of the changes that we've made in the past and tonight we're coming with more changes. So just trying to be flexible and bring something forward that is going to work for, for everyone. The last slide is really just more of, you know, just sort of putting a cap on this, which, you know, what we're presenting and what we're proposing is consistent with the comp plan. It is much less dense than what was there before. It, well, what's there currently, I should say, the GDP that's currently approved. You know, that has a, that has a large amount, the ability for a large amount of commercial. And that's also three stories. And we've heard a lot about, we want this to be lower to two story and we've already made that change. Our must build commercial is actually higher, slightly higher, but still higher. And then I think the last one here is, is the one that I, I really think is, is valuable for the community. It really brings some, some, some more attainable, I would say, in diverse housing. Just the nature of attached housing is it's generally lower cost than, than, than single family detached housing. And that's a need that I think everybody would agree is, is needed in Louisville. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Commissioner, questions of the applicant? Commissioner Williams.
Yeah, I, I have one thing to note and an actual question. The thing I wanted to note that the lanterns is not 55 plus. Though there are people that are 55 plus there, there's a few that are not. And it's not restricted. And I don't believe, and Lisa can correct me, that Louisville has any 55 plus restricted housing. Is that correct, Lisa?
Um, yeah, as far as I'm aware, I'm not aware of any that are de-restricted other than the affordable units at Kestrel.
Okay, thank you. That, that is, that's a good clarification right there. And so then the question I have, and I was just curious on the inclusionary housing ordinance and how you plan to meet that and what, what were your plan there?
We definitely plan to meet it as part of our, our requirement going forward. But we haven't made any decisions on the mix of onsite, offsite, cash and loo. We haven't, we haven't got there yet.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Deal.
Mr. Bear, can you talk about how the proposed GDP is less dense than the?
Yeah, just simply from a square, just from, sure, sure. From a square foot standpoint, if you add up all the square footage of what could be built on the site now and what we're proposing, it's less. So from that standpoint, and then also that was the, the current plan is three story buildings. Just so, and ours are two story, which isn't necessarily tie into density, but will feel less dense.
Okay. So you're, you're referring to, I guess, what's currently approved, not necessarily what we last saw.
Right, right.
In my mind, we're adding 5,000 commercial, 5,000 square feet of commercial from the last time we saw the proposal. So that's not less.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. I, I meant the, the prior, the prior plan that from years ago.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Moline.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Bear. We might've talked about this at one of the previous meetings and you maybe get this question. But I'm just, I'm, I'd like to hear when, when community members say, gosh, we just want to see more commercial out on this property. How, how do you respond to those kinds of comments or requests?
We track, I'm tracking over 500,000 square feet of commercial within 1.5 miles of the site. It's not a perfect radius because we have, we have to, we have to include downtown or old town. And with that, there's over, I think, a hundred, over 140,000 feet of vacancy right now. Okay. But when you look at that vacancy, it's made up of different type, different product types. So I respond to that question and that comment when people ask me, you know, gosh, there's a lot of vacancy out there in the market today. But we're building something a little different here, more neighborhood serving. And so we think that, and that's where we thought the 15,000 was the right number.
Okay, great. Thanks very much.
Do we have any additional questions of the applicant at this time? Bounce around here now. Okay. All right. Moving on then, we would open it up to public comment. And I'd like to start that with a motion to add the written public comment that we received this afternoon into the record.
I'm moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Hefner. Please, Chair Hefner, thank you. And a second from Commissioner Howe. All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
I opposed, hearing none. Then I would invite the public up to speak at this time. Please limit yourself to three minutes. There is no aggregation of time permitted. And please begin with stating your full name and address. And.
Sorry, Chair, let me get my screens switched around. All right. So it looks like first we have Mark Thompson. You should be able to unmute and go ahead.
Oh, great. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Christopher Mark Thompson, but I go by Mark. My wife Linda and I are owners and residents at 782 Tree Street, which is part of the Steel Ranch neighborhood. Linda and I have been impressed with the responsiveness of mass equities folks, the feedback provided by many individuals in our neighborhood. Their team has politely listened to our concerns and suggestions. As a result, they have made many modifications to the original plan, some of the Brian just discussed. But examples include decreasing the maximum building height, eliminating a drive-through restaurant option, modifying road ingress egress, rejecting many fewer vehicle trips and increasing the availability of off-street parking. Regarding the 55 plus age restriction, Commissioner, Commissioner Williams stated, Ms. Ritchie confirmed that Louisville doesn't have any designated 55 plus housing. If this is true, none of the former developers within Louisville were forced to provide formerly labeled 55 plus housing. And it doesn't seem useful, let alone fair, to hold mass equities to this requirement. Our understanding is that the residents being proposed by Mass Equities will have the main, will have main floor masters with additional bedrooms on a different floor, a configuration that doesn't typically appeal to families with children living at home. For example, the Steel Ranch community, Steel Ranch patio homes all have main floor masters and have one to three bedrooms in the basement. The overwhelming majority of these homes are occupied by singles or couples 55 and older. It sounds like a tremendous waste of resources to add the cumbersome complexity of managing and policing age restriction when the proposed home configuration will probably drive the occupancy toward older folks anyway. We recognize that mass equities is willing to compromise and offer 20% that the housing is 55 plus, but we don't believe it's right to hold them to this inequitable double standard. Regarding commercial space, we have both heard and read opinions that the foundry development should include 75,000 square feet of commercial space. We understand there's about 140,000 square feet of empty commercial space in the square mile plus surrounding the foundry property. And this doesn't include any of the yet to be built commercial space in the recently approved Lafayette Development Project just to the north of the foundry property. We support the new compromise proposal to increase it to 20,000 square feet from the previously proposed 15,000 square feet. Regarding neighborhood opinion, some are saying that most of the Steel Ranch do not support mass equities proposal. And I fear that this is inappropriately influencing the planning commission and the city council. While we've been told that the majority of the residents in the 24 patio homes closest to the development are not in favor of the mass equities proposal, there are upwards of 200 other homes in the Steel Ranch neighborhood. And we know firsthand that many of those residents are in favor of the plan. In summary, my wife and I wholeheartedly support mass equities proposal and encourage its approval. Thank you.
And thank you very much, Mr. Thompson. The next speaker.
All right. So far I don't see any hands raised. If anyone in the public would like to share their thoughts tonight, hit the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. All right, we're seeing some hands. Come on. Gary Larson, you're next, should be able to speak.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. Hi, my name is Gary Larson. I live at 2189 Park Lane, which is on Steel Ranch Park. So I look directly across to this lot. I was also very instrumental in working with the prior developer on the original 2016 version of the foundry. The community never asked for 55 plus. What we wanted and still want as an adjacent community, and I'll define adjacent community the way we're using it, is so we've got 30 patio homes right here around the park, all with main floor master bedrooms. We've got the lanterns right next to us with 24 units total, all with main floor master bedrooms. And when we talk about senior housing, what we've always talked about is that main floor master concept. This was a wonderful move that my wife and I made when we came here. I'm 70 now. I don't want to have to deal with stairs, but we've got a basement with two bedrooms in it for when my daughter and her family come to visit. The doors are wider to accommodate wheelchairs. The levers on the doors rather than balls are levers so that elderly people, when you get into your eighties and you can't grasp a knob to open the door, very, very little step up in the garage up into the house. So little, little fine points like that. And when we were talking with Brian early on in the concept, Brian, the developer, that's what we were talking about was the senior type housing design that was alluded to earlier by Ms. Williams and also by Lisa. That's what the community has been wanting. We don't necessarily want the restrictions of 55 plus. We want designs that will encourage more seniors. And by the way, the, the city council back in 2016, that's what we were talking about was senior design. And that city council defined it as 55 plus. And many of them on the council at the time said that they just shouldn't have it be 100% rather than 75% it ended up as. So that's what we're talking about. Also, the townhomes, what we'd really like to see, and again, this is the adjacent community that lives right on the doorstep of this new development, rather than the townhomes creating that tunnel effect along Highway 42. We'd rather see more commercial there, very similar to Forest Park Plaza, which is very inviting community residential or a commercial. We'd like to see a dedicated restaurant rather than a strip mall that would have maybe a taco shop or a pizza place with only four tables. We'd rather have a sit-down restaurant like the 2016 design had. And we've never gotten any positive feedback from the developer on doing many, building in or designing in a dedicated restaurant and/or the developer going out and looking for an anchor restaurant to establish itself here. Because that's what the community wants here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Larson. And you mentioned we have some additional people who would like.
Yeah. So next, we have Mr. Jeff Gass. So Jeff, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Thank you. Jeffrey Gass, 784 Meadow Ark Lane, Steel Ranch Patio Home on the western end. First of all, I'd like to thank the planning commissioner for coming back again for the fourth time for this. First of all, I'd like to thank Brian for his openness with the community that we've had over the year plus, since like March of 2020 to get to this point tonight. Mass equities has been very forthcoming with us and has listened to what city council thought they want by increasing it from 15 to 20,000 square feet of commercial and to put some age restrictions on some of the homes, which I personally don't understand because once we get to the PUD process, all the concerns by some of the residents would be discussed at that time as to the actual type of product that would be developed. I'm assuming, you know, wire downstairs, handles on doors, type of commercial and all that type of information. Since this planning commission had approved 15,000 square feet back in August and up to 59 homes to be built, I don't see there's any reason why the planning commission won't approve tonight's amended changes since city council is all for more commercial. And this proposal has given them an extra 20, extra 33% by going from 15,000 to 20,000 square feet of commercial. And, you know, they're always concerned about the tax base rate of the 29%. But if we have empty storefronts, you know, 29% of zero is zero. So by keeping it to a limited number of square foot, we would be better off. Again, we all want quality product in the development because we're all affected by that. And again, I'm all for mass equities getting approval tonight so they can actually then design and present their PUD to the, to the city as what actually does get built on that property. Thank you very much.
And thank you very much, Mr. Gass.
All right. Again, anyone in the attendees list tonight, please hit the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. Um, so Chair Brenner, I don't see any additional hands raised at this time.
All right. Thank you very much. Does the applicant wish to address anything raised by the public comment or provide any additional information for the planning commission to consider?
Um, I just wanted to make a comment on the commercial. We're, we're very active in the market with commercial brokers because we have commercial space in Boulder County. So we have been talking with a number of people about the commercial space, operators, specifically operators and brokers in the market. So there was a comment about that, which, which is not true. We, we've been active because that's something we really want to understand. If we're going to increase the commercial, we want to know that there's going to be tenants that want to go into that space. And we, we think it is viable. We feel that the 15,000 is doable and we can deliver the types of tenants that the, the community is asking for. I mean, that's what will make that vibrant and, and, you know, going back to the concept plan, which again is a concept plan. That's how we set that up. So I wanted to comment on that. I think that was all I have.
Well, now to, to additional commissioner questions of the applicant. I would start with a question regarding this senior livable or the first floor master living concept. What's your reaction to the desire for that, whether restricted in the deed or otherwise?
Yeah, you know, I, I don't necessarily have a problem with it of all, at all. If that's what the market wants and that's what the community, you know, can support, then, then we can design units that way. I mean, that, again, part of the PUD amendment process and we look forward to getting into that stage. But, um, you know, I, I think someone said it earlier. If, if we're going to build 55 plus units, we want to build them right so that they're, that they're occupied by people that, you know, want to use that, that unit. So.
Additional commissioner questions? Commissioner Deal.
Mr. Bear, could, you could just elaborate on or confirm an assumption I have, maybe others have. And it, it's this, the return on equity, return on investment that a developer gets from a residential development or unit versus a commercial, can you comment on that? Cause it, you know, in my assumption, maybe others is too, is that residential, especially in today's market in Boulder County, is extremely, you're, you're going to do well in terms of an ROI. And I'm just curious, and my perception is on commercial, it's, it's nowhere near that. Is that accurate? And then can you elaborate further?
It's, it's a tough question because it depends on a number of factors. I mean, it depends on location. It depends on the type of commercial tenants that go into the space. You know, so I, I think as a general statement, I would, I would disagree with that. I mean, there's definitely pockets in areas where commercial is more, drives a higher ROI than residential. But it's, it's, it's difficult to just, just sort of make that statement in, in a given area until you actually build it and you find out which types of tenants are going to occupy because that becomes the biggest driver for commercial. And markets change, as you know, they go, they go up and down and, and different products are in favor at different times. So I, I'm not trying to be evasive on the question. It's a, it's a tough one to, to, to give a specific answer on.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Williams.
Yeah, however, I'm gonna, um, add more to what Ben's question is for you, Brian. With the residential, you get your return on investment right away, right? I mean, it's, it's sold and you're not renting out space like the commercial. Is that correct?
Well, you, you can sell the commercial. There's commercial, commercial. Well, you, you can sell the commercial, there's commercial, commercial condos. That can be sold and, and/or rented, or you can rent the building and then turn around and sell it. So I, I, I think they're, they're all, it's all fairly fungible.
Okay, so there's all rooms of. Opportunities, okay. I always thought that you just, you own the, the. Commercial and then you rent it out and that, that's how you make your money, but I'm. Thank you.
Any additional questions of the applicant? Great, thanks. You're off my screen, Commissioner How, please go ahead.
Hi, Brian. I was reviewing some of the councilman's. Discussion points and Mayor Stolzmann said that she would like to require the affordable housing needs. Would you be opposed to having those required and not allowing a fee in lieu?
Just in terms of, of onsite or offsite, like, because I am required to comply with the housing regs.
Are you, you're allowed to do the fee in lieu? Instead of creating those site, those units.
Oh, okay, yeah. I, I'd like to maintain that flexibility at this point. I mean, I, I don't even know what we're building here. So I'd like to maintain that flexibility.
All right, thanks. Any additional questions? Last, last chance for questions of the applicant. Seeing none. Open it to a staff response and closing statement.
Sure, thanks, Commissioner. So again, want to thank you always for your thoughtful discussion. I don't really have anything further to add other than, again, we continue to recommend supportive of the application. And I, and I do think that, you know, given some of the policies and the comprehensive plan. You could find that this further supports the comprehensive plan policies for housing by the amendment to the subdivision agreement. So I don't have anything further though unless you have questions for me.
Thank you very much. Any last chance questions? From the commissioners of staff? And again, actually, I've got a couple of the commissioners are off my screen. So if you happen to be one of those, no, okay, great. Not seeing anybody raise their hands. I will now close the public hearing and the planning commissioners will deliberate on the evidence presented during deliberations. No further public comment or other testimony or evidence will be received. Is there anybody who would like to begin? Commissioner Hefner.
Thanks. So, you know, first of all, I appreciate the applicant being back with us again for, I think it's a third time. From the continued attention to this. I'm, you know, I, I found the instruction or sort of lack thereof from council, a, a little puzzling. In, in terms of why this was coming back to us. To reconsider. You know, I, I don't have a big objection. I think the change from fifteen to twenty thousand square feet is, is sort of within the margin. I, I don't really see that as a big change. I, I do, however, have a pretty strong objection to the fifty-five plus requirement. And it's for a few, few different reasons. First, you know, I think there's some practical concerns. What we saw is raising around enforcement and tracking who's in there and has it been rented? And how old are the different occupants and have you, have you met whatever the threshold is? I think some of the public comments were, were right on in saying that this is a design issue that can really be addressed in the PUD stage. In, in making a first four bedroom situation that, that maybe would be most suitable. For older folks, and I, I certainly don't have an issue with that. And I think it's totally within the developers prerogative to bring us a, a design that they think is going to be marketable and that they think makes sense. And, and certainly not suggesting that there isn't a need for that type of design. What, what I am suggesting though is that it, it would be, in my view, bad policy to implement a restrictive deed covenant. Saying who can live in particular homes. You know, I, I understand that there's an exemption from the Fair Housing Act for fifty-five plus. Which would otherwise be illegal housing discrimination. But just because you can do it, I, I don't think means that you should. And I, I think this commission would be hesitant to approve special housing for other. Sort of classes of people exclusively, no matter how deserving. And I'm not certainly saying that older folks aren't, aren't deserving and don't deserve to live in nice homes. But I, I think excluding, for example, young professionals or people with kids or single mothers. Or, or other people who might, you know, legitimately be interested in living in these homes either now or ten years from now or thirty years from now. When conditions may have changed significantly would be a mistake. To, to lock that in today with a, with a permanent restrictive covenant. And I, I think it's unfair and I think it's the kind of discrimination that really we shouldn't be involved in. So that, that's my piece. I, I'll probably be supporting an amendment to the resolution to remove the fifty-five plus requirement as a deed restriction.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Hefner. Commissioner Deal.
Yeah, first, I guess a kind of a procedural question for you, Chair. You know, my opposition to the conversion of commercial space to allowing more residential units is well documented over two meetings. So a question for you. Given that the city council basically did not have an issue with that. From a planning commission standpoint, should I set aside that opposition and focus on the two issues that they remanded back to us? Or should I just continue with my overall kind of opposition to the application?
It, it's certainly your prerogative to address any issues you care to address. Procedurally, there are no requirements or restrictions or, or any kind of guiding language that would push you in one direction or another, so.
Okay. So I'll just quickly, quick, quickly reiterate kind of my opposition. And I'll, I'll just say this, maybe as a principle that we as a commission, I think. Need to get our, our heads around and our, an understanding around. And that's, we're going to continue to face situations where. Land property was basically zoned for commercial or maybe is currently zoned for commercial and is sitting vacant. And I think we're going to continue to see. Owners, applicants, developers say, well, we can't development, the, the market isn't there, market conditions aren't there. And it's my contention that I think there's a bit of a holding period, the carrying cost for investment property today is very low, given our interest rate environment. And my concern is that, you know, they can hold property three years, five years, ten years. And, and I get it, residents are going to want, are going to say, we need to do something with this dirt pile. We need to do something with this empty storefront. You know, and, and developers have the patience and the, the cheap carrying cost to, to wait out. Whether it be citizens, planning commission members or city council members. So that's just kind of the environment I, I see us in. With regard to the two issues at hand, I'm. More aligned with Vice Chair Hefner on not requiring this fifty-five. I think it's kind of an artificial construct to put that in a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar townhome. And as far as the five thousand additional commercial square feet, I mean, that's at the developer's option. So obviously, I was in favor of more commercial anyway. So of course I would be open to giving them an option to develop more commercial. I'll be good at that, thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Williams.
Yes, and so I'm gonna respectfully disagree with Commissioner Hefner in the fact that. The, putting the fifty-five plus restriction on this, we are also putting the inclusionary affordable housing ordinance restriction on it as well. So I think we've, you know, that, that's. Very, very close to the same. You could argue that, that you're putting another restriction. And there are other cities that do the fifty-five plus restriction and they've had no issues. And they have that. Offerings in their, in their cities. So that's something that Lewisville would be missing on that piece if we took this out. And then I have a few comments. And I think it's really important that this development serves the neighborhood. And as the South Boulder Road. Small area plan says about the highway forty-two quarter, I'll just read just a little snippet of it. It begins at the city limits adjacent to Pascal Drive and continues south on the west side of highway forty-two until transitioning to the urban center at Heckla Drive. This urban quarter focuses on commercial opportunities, including office and neighborhood retail. Along with higher density, density housing in close proximity to the roadway. I need water, sorry. The land uses. Along the quarter will transition and provide connections to the lower density residential adjacent to the lower residential properties. So that's the piece that I'm been focusing on this whole time. And it, it needs to serve the neighborhood. And so I, I'm grappling with this piece. I'm not sure that it meets that small area plan. The other thing is, we're pretty much. Slightly positive with the. Long-term revenue for the city in this property. So you know, the fiduciary responsibility that we have as the planning commissioners. I, I do not feel that we're meeting that with this property. It was always to be commercial or mixed use. And I, I just feel that we've gotten away from that. And then, let's see here. Have a million different notes here, so I'm trying to narrow them down here. But. At this point, those are my main points. And I'll turn it over to somebody else.
Thank you very much. And let's see. Commissioner Mullin.
I'll go next unless, unless Commissioner Howe would like to. I'll go. The, this has been really interesting discussion, commissioners. I appreciate everybody's perspective and of course, the, the staff presentation, the discussion with the applicant and the, and the public comment. I, I'm, I will be in support of, of this overall. Concept again, as I was in, at, at a previous hearing. And I have, I share some of the reservations about the fifty-five and, and older. For the reasons that Commissioner Hefner, Commissioner Deal and, and that we've, that we've previously spoken about. I see the, I see that the applicant willing to comply and of course will need to comply. With the affordable housing, the new affordable housing regulations. And so that feels like a really different level of commitment. And for, for this development and something that our town has recognized, the fifty-five and older. Is something that seems a little, you know, not at the, at that same level. Yet anyway, and, and I'm, and I'm not sure that, that that's something that is as crucial for our city. As just housing is in general. And that's, that's maybe the last point I'd make is, I appreciate that we really would love to have more commercial on, on some of these properties. The, the lots, for example, in front of the north end come to mind. This, the, these properties here. And I, I guess the community just has to, you know, we, we're, we're dealing with these situations as they arise and doing our best to make the right kinds of decisions about. When is the time to move these things and, and develop them? Or do we risk them sitting there, you know, for years and years and years? And I guess, you know, the housing jobs imbalance in Boulder County is well documented. And so for us, you know, for us to have more housing in Lewisville. I don't know that we need to think of it in, in negative terms. Yes, it costs, you know, it, it, it costs the, the city to serve those areas. But at the same time, it is a real need for the people in our community. And there are other parts of our town, for example, we've talked about this last time too. Some of the things that we've, at least we've approved down the road that would really make some big differences in city revenue. So I, I don't know that, that each site necessarily has to balance itself. So those are some of the reasons why I'll, I'll, I'll probably be supporting this again.
Thank you, Commissioner Mullin. And Commissioner Howe.
Yeah, I'm glad I get to go last. Thanks everyone for going before me. It's, it's been a pleasure to listen to all the commissioners speak and I really value your opinions. Mainly because I really do see both sides of this debate or discussion clearly. I think a shout out and a thank you to Mass Equities and Brian Bear for persisting and remaining open to requested changes. A thank you to the planning staff for the proposals preparation. And also a thank you to the public, which made me understand that in general, I think the reaction from the public was more positive than I've seen in the past. Though there were reservations. And I think that hopefully we can. Make these changes that there will be a win-win-win for everybody here. I think one of the challenges we face is that as, as we've talked about in a few minutes ago, is that there's the environment, the economic environment is quickly, quickly changing. And the social demands are as well. But we need as a, as a commission to think about what we can provide long-term. As a benefit to our Lewisville citizens. And with that discussion, we have to think, is this the right time? Commissioner Mullin said, is this the right time to develop it? Or when would be a good time? Because we know that things are constantly changing. So is another five years of waiting? Good for the citizen? In my opinion, I'm not sure it is. You'll still have to meet a certain set of demands and environmental conditions, economic, environmental conditions at that point. I think we've changed this proposal appropriately for today's environment. And I think it will serve that community well, as we've heard back from some of the public. There, it adds some neighborhood commercial, adds maybe a feeling of neighborhood to the Steel Ranch area. People can, can go to a store that's a little bit closer than some others. I think we do need to decouple the fifty-five and, and the, the idea of senior housing. When I looked at the city council member remarks. Council members Maloney, Lipton, Dickinson, Brown, Lay and Fahey all mentioned senior housing. I didn't see a discussion too much, at least in the minutes of. The fifty-five and older. So, so I, I think I agree with. The previous comments, commissioner comments about supporting the amendment for the removal of the fifty-five deed restriction. I think that this increases the housing availability, which is a big need for Lewisville. And it increases the amenity type and number of amenities for Lewisville. The one reservation I have is, which is the comment that. The mayor Stolzmann made was, I, I think we make it a little bit easy for some of these proposals to get out of. The affordable housing. I, I really think that's important. I do agree with Mayor Stolzmann on that. I would lean towards requiring that. I don't know what the legality of that is because I know there's options that we provide. But it seems like an easy fee and fee, a fee that they could pay to, these proposals could pay to not support that. But then the value for the city seems great for the affordable housing. We really are. You know, we're seven hundred sixty-nine units short of what we're, what our goal is. And how do we get to that goal without encouraging or, or reducing the options there? So I would be happy to hear what people have to say about those affordable housing units. I think that that is a. I think that that is an important part of this proposal. But in general, I am in favor of this.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna give a few thoughts and then, yeah, we'll open it. We'll all have more chances for discussion. So regarding that issue, in particular, the affordable housing, that law for affordable housing in Lewisville was written approximately five months ago. The ink is still wet, and it was written in such a way that it allows anybody to pay a fee in lieu. So if, as a community, our goal was to absolutely, under all circumstances, they have to build the units, then I would have expected a different law. I personally would love to see the units built. But given, given the circumstances of how the law reads, I don't know what the thinking of that was at that time when council considered and adopted the law. But to me, that's a pretty strong indication that they were expecting that this was a path that some people might choose to take. So regarding the timing of it, I would agree with you, Commissioner Howe, quite a bit on, we certainly don't have a crystal ball. Many of us accept that the market, the climate for retail in Lewisville has forever changed because there's more of it surrounding us. There's quite a bit more now in Lafayette than there ever was. There is an extremely large more amount in Erie. And there is also a very large amount coming online in Superior. So would five years make any difference to somehow having a market demand for retail in Lewisville come back around? Given the experience of the last ten years, I find that hard to believe. So I don't think that it's the planning commission's job necessarily to try to predict the future. Certainly, we have to take into account trends and what we, you know, yes, what we think might happen is part of it. But I don't know that it's our job to try to time the market, as it were, on that issue. Regarding fifty-five plus, I do think that's what city council was referring to in their discussion of senior housing, that what they were wanting to see was deed-restricted fifty-five-plus units. So I don't, none of us know, right, what number they're hoping for, expecting. Interestingly enough, I did happen to drive by a fifty-five-plus community or, you know, kind of a apartment, large, very large apartment complex in a nearby community this week. And I actually do wonder how that addresses kind of diversity concerns. If the design, if the goal of what we're trying to achieve in fifty-five-plus designation is a design goal for accessibility, it does strike me as a strange way to get there. If there's market demand for that type of unit, then in theory, that will be provided. But at the same time, I do kind of like the thought that requiring fifty-five-plus will, while the language doesn't require that type of design, will kind of de facto require that type of design. And as others have pointed out, that product has been provided elsewhere within Steel Ranch without those requirements. So I'm on the fence of that one. I don't, I'm at this point, because the applicant has proposed this number of fifty-five-plus units, I'm okay with proceeding with those in there, because I think that's what it's gonna take for city council to be able to approve anyway. So whether we add an amendment to, or, you know, add a condition to this that that requirement be removed, I think council is looking to see that. So, excuse me. So why don't I open it back up? And I know I saw a number of hands go up. Commissioner Williams?
Okay, so I had a couple more points. I'm just gonna refer to the, you know, we are trying to keep our older population in Lewisville so they don't have to leave the city in order to get something that works for a fifty-five-plus population. And you're right, that is how to get there, is using the deed restrictions or mandating the type of product. The other thing I wanted to point out is, we are talking about Highway forty-two. It's a state highway, it's a major corridor, and we are talking about building a bunch of homes right on that highway. And so I just want to make sure that we're all looking at that property, and we know exactly where that is. And while it's nice to have more residential, is this the right place? And it is, it's a state highway, it's a very busy road. You can't even get out on that street on Summit View Drive, because it's constant cars. So, I mean, it just doesn't seem like the right place for this particular development. That is, I just want to make that comment. I have never thought that. I've always thought that it was supposed to be commercial, based on where it is, that it's, you know, a major highway. So I'm wondering if we're losing sight of that. And then, you know, we don't have to develop every piece of land, that is not our job. We don't have to do that. Just because commercial is not amenable today doesn't mean it won't be in the future. So giving up a very vital piece of land on a major state highway to residential, it just, it, to me, is just poor city planning. And I'm gonna vote no, no question. Any, any kind of change you make to this, I'm voting no.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Deal?
Yeah, I'll just echo Commissioner Williams on that point, in that I don't view our role to facilitate the development of every, you know, undeveloped property in the city. Our role is to view and, you know, approve or reject applications as to whether or not they meet the guiding documents and code, et cetera, that are set by the citizens. So the fact that something's sitting there, not developed, I, again, I don't think it's our role to kind of fast-track an option. Now, obviously, we can, from time to time, look at alternatives or look at changing, which is obviously what we're doing here. But I just, if we end up trying to, you know, figure out every avenue to get every piece developed, then, you know, we'll be very similar to, you know, other communities in the county and Denver metro. So, and that, to me, is what, one of the things that keeps Lewisville special. That being said, I don't, I won't go on and on. But in terms of the affordability question, I think we got kind of hung up around senior housing and affordable senior housing and senior housing. The only thing that is at play here is the new law, which they have to comply with. And I think this is gonna be a great first test. There was a lot of arguments made that all you're doing by passing this law is the developer's gonna increase the price, the sale price, to cover the fee in lieu, which obviously is increasing home prices and not making it more affordable. Now, obviously, the city has those funds, which hopefully will use those intelligently in some way to create affordable housing. But I am skeptical that we'll see the developer, you know, actually build the affordable units in this development. And again, you know, adding all the additional units to this development, my guess is there's gonna be a lottery, and these will be sold in a week or less. So now, that's a drop in the bucket in terms of helping with the housing shortage and housing affordability.
Thank you, Commissioner Deal. Commissioner Howe, was that you? Were you waving at us, or?
I guess, just in response to Commissioner Williams, I guess I'm trying to think, I'm trying to picture Highway forty-two. And I think there are some other areas, and I'm not saying that you're, that this is appropriate for this area or that you're wrong. But I'm just trying to think, south of the downtown Lewisville, there are some other residential areas that are off of Highway forty-two. So I don't, I don't know if this would be the only one, just a discussion for the surroundings.
I will just point out that it's fifty miles per hour as you were coming southbound from, like, say, Longmont. As opposed to further down, it's like, you know, forty or thirty-five. So it does change the environment and the traffic calming once you leave the Hecla or that particular area. So they're coming in, you know, really fast. And then after they hit the light, everybody's going really slow. So it's vastly different.
Commissioner Moline?
You know, I appreciate everybody's comments. I guess I'll just say, I feel like this proposal meets the comprehensive plan and meets all of the, is compliant as per the staff recommendation with all of the planning issues per the code. So I think, I guess, you know, I know that that's also an important part of our deliberation is treating each application fairly. And yes, we might want to wade on things, or we might want to do things differently in the future. I do also feel like our job is to treat each application fairly. And I find that this one meets, meets those requirements of compliance with the comprehensive plan, the State Highway forty-two plan, and the city's municipal code.
And I would agree with you also on that. It certainly is not our role to develop every, we don't develop properties, right? As a planning commission, it is, we don't develop properties. As a city, we don't develop properties typically. The market does, right? And so this is privately-owned property that somebody has approached the city planning commission and our process beyond us to city council with, asking for approval of this, given all those considerations. So at that point, it's not that our job is to develop properties, it's rather our job is to respond to the proposal at hand. And given what they've proposed, I find myself in support of the proposal as currently provided. Do we have any, Vice Chair Hefner?
Yeah, I just briefly want to agree with the sentiment that both you and Commissioner Moline just expressed, that in our sort of quasi-judicial role, our job is to apply the law as it's written. And certainly, there's room for discretion and healthy debate and disagreement about what it means to do that. But we are sitting quasi-judicially and we're to apply the law to proposals. And if they meet the requirements, they meet the requirements. And again, not to say that we can't debate what those requirements are, or what they mean, or how they shouldn't be interpreted. But that's how I see our role.
All right, do we have any additional Commissioner deliberations, discussion points? Not seeing any, then, I would entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion. Let's see, I mean, I make a motion to approve Resolution Number sixteen, Series twenty-twenty-one, a resolution recommending approval of a request for a Seventh Amendment to the Dakota General Development Plan to allow up to fifty-nine dwelling units and twenty thousand square feet of commercial development, and a Second Amendment to the Foundry Subdivision Agreement to reduce the requirement for occupancy by persons fifty-five years of age and older from twenty-four dwelling units to twelve dwelling units.
And do we have a second?
I'll second, but I also have a small amendment I'd like to offer.
Okay, Vice Chair Hefner. So the way the procedure works on this one is you can propose the amendment, and then the person who's made the motion can decide whether it's considered friendly amendment or not. So, and then, just one quick, one quick housekeeping before we do that. Lisa, can you confirm, the agenda says it's Resolution seventeen. Verbally, we've said sixteen, and on the screen, we've said something else.
Let me check real quick to see whatever it is in the packet.
You can go ahead and do that, and if I could ask Vice Chair Hefner to...
It's Resolution sixteen in the packet. I may have labeled it wrong. It's sixteen, Resolution sixteen, thank you.
Commissioner Hefner, if you...
So my amendment is, if you have the resolution in front of you, would be in the final substantive paragraph that begins now, now therefore be it resolved, to change the last part of that, to say that we're going to reduce the requirement for occupancy by persons fifty-five years of age and older from twenty-four dwelling units to zero dwelling units. And the change would be, it's written currently as twelve dwelling units, and that would be to go from twelve to zero.
You get to decide whether you consider that a friendly amendment. If it's not considered a friendly amendment, then Commissioner Hefner, you have the choice of voting against it as proposed without the amendment, which, if my number counting is correct, could flip us back into a stalemate. So, but that's, that's your prerogative as we move forward with this. So Commissioner Moline?
So I appreciate your, I guess I'm gonna talk through this for just a second. I appreciate the sentiment, Vice Chair Hefner. I'm also, oh, I appreciated Chair Bronis' perspective on it. And so I, I'm, I am kind of prepared to see what happens if we just keep this as proposed in the packet. So maybe, maybe for now, let me decline that friendly amendment and see where we go. And we can...
Yep.
In support of that amendment, I would just offer, you know, I understand council expressed concern about fifty-five-plus. And I'm certainly sympathetic to that. But at the same time, they did send it back to us for our recommendation. And, you know, I think we have an obligation to offer what we believe the right thing to do here is. And I don't want to speak for anyone else as to what they think that is. But in my view, it would be to eliminate this requirement.
So help me understand, then, your amendment, your proposed condition would remove any requirement for fifty-five-plus, but I hear you acknowledging that city council wanted it. Is that...
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think this would be a polite way of saying, look, you sent this back to us and we...
Oh, we still...
To the extent you were suggesting we ought to have this, these deed-restricted units, we disagree. And we stand by what we originally recommended.
Thank you for clarifying that.
If I don't, if you don't mind, I might chime in with one clarifier. So independent of what planning commission votes on tonight, the applicant can still move forward. You know, the application that, it would be then, I think, of the applicant's discretion if they want to move forward to meet planning commission's recommendation and remove that from the application or planning commission's recommendation, you know, was to remove the requirement, but the applicant is still gonna present the application to include it. So just, I just wanted to put that in there for context, as you all are factoring in kind of the ramifications of removing the requirement when it gets to city council.
Great, thank you very much. So procedurally there, what we could do, if you would prefer, is we could move forward with a vote as proposed without the condition. Commissioner or Vice Chair Hefner, if you chose to vote against the proposal, we could then open it up for a motion again. I could open up for a motion again. You could jump on the opportunity to provide the motion with your condition as written. And then we would vote on it again, and we could test to see if you had enough votes at that time. Just a little procedural... Just, just little, little procedural, um.
Can I, can I suggest an alternative procedure, which of course, Mr. Chair, you have the, the discretion to accept or decline, but I, I would suggest we vote first on the motion that's on the table, and then second, on my amendment. You know, and see if they both pass.
Can we put a condition on after we've approved? I don't think we can.
No, so you couldn't add a condition later. You also can take just an informal straw poll to see where thing, you know, to see where votes stand and not have it be, you know, a roll call vote. So, you know, you have a little bit of discretion as far as how you could talk around your decisions as it relates to amendments, if you don't want to do a vote on the record at this time quite yet.
Yeah, you know, and let me just throw out there, if, if I, this one is, um, given, given the input that we just got from, from Lisa, you know, I'm, I, I don't have a strong feeling, like if, if it makes sense to include that as a friendly amendment, I'm prepared to do that. If we think that'll help with the passage of this, so I, 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 I can be persuaded to do that.
Senator Manchin, I mean, Commissioner Hefner?
That's good enough for me.
I would just, can I make a quick comment?
Compliment, by the way.
I just want to make a quick comment. I, I think we've got to keep it in perspective as well. This is twenty percent, just over twenty percent of the units would be plus fifty-five. So I just want to throw that out there, so, you know, we're not looking at a majority of the units.
Right, twelve, twelve, twelve units, uh, in total.
Sounds like an administrative nightmare.
Does have some concerns, yes.
We see how many votes there are for the amendment and, and move on from there.
So I'm hearing, um, seems like a couple people who are in favor of the proposal at hand are, um, perhaps okay. Commissioner, how, how are you feeling on, uh, on all of this?
It may be the swing, it may be the swing vote here.
Um, we're all swing voters, so.
Yeah, I know. Well, I, I do see that it's the, it's a, it's not a large proportion of the units that are plus fifty-five. I can see the value in that. I think, I think the most important thing is having the accessibility, I think we would all agree with this, is the accessibility for what we consider senior housing or senior living, whether you say that's fifty-five and older or older. But I, I understand, I understand the concern that being plus fifty-five, that, that does limit the options for some homeowners.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm with you, and I guess I just come down to, I'm still stuck on the thought of that. City council clearly wanted something addressed for fifty-five plus. And why, well, I, I appreciate that we may think that it, um, is not necessarily good planning. Do we really want to just make a statement? I, 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 I think, um, I don't know that it is a respectful statement actually at that point, because it has come back to us so clearly, uh, that that's something that they want. So, so I'm, I'm just torn, uh, between whether, whether we should, a- a- and yet, as we get into it, it's still, it's clear to me tha- that that, that the applicant is going to have to address this issue when they come before a city council. So I, I don't know, I think we're just kind of running ourselves in circles, um, thinking that we're going to actually accomplish anything at the end of the day by stripping this requirement.
Can we just go ahead and vote on the amendment and then vote on the?
Well, we can't, we don't get to vote on the amendment singularly unto itself.
Well, before we would vote on the resolution.
Yeah, no, we can't. That's not, the procedure is, we either, we either accept the condition as part of our vote, uh, we're not allowed to.
I think if I heard Commissioner Moline correctly, he, he accepted it as friendly, so maybe we can vote and see if it passes with the friendly amendment, and if it doesn't, then we can vote on the un, by the unamended resolution.
I know you guys don't care about my opinion anymore at this point, but I'm going to make a, a really important point here is that, uh, you run the risk of having this body, this planning commission, not be, um, as, uh, helpful to the city council, and also, um, it, it may backfire. So I, I'm kind of finding it inappropriate, um, to city council to do that, but that, that's just my opinion.
No, we, we do care about your opinion, and I, I actually have to appreciate that very much. I, uh, yeah, I just don't know, right? We, 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 um, are selected by and serve city council. Their message has been clear that they wanted to see, uh, this issue addressed here, so whether we think it's good planning or not, I don't know. I, um, I don't know which outweighs. Is, is the planning from the planning commission outweighs what city has, council has told us in pretty much no uncertain terms that they wanted to see addressed, so.
So don't we serve at the pleasure of city council? I mean, that is like literally the, the, the.
I'm not sure if pleasure is, is the language, but it's the effect, certainly, yes.
Yeah.
I would just point out, though, that, that we are, you know, we are a recommending body. This was sent back to us for additional consideration and deliberation on these issues. A- and I think it's one thing to have a difference of opinion about, um, as you point out, Mr. Chair, what is or isn't good planning or good policy. But in, in my view, as a recommending body, we ought to try and make a good recommendation that, that, you know, we feel is the correct one. A- and city council can certainly overrule us if that's, if that's what they please. I, I don't think it's disrespectful to disagree.
All right, with that, then, uh, Commissioner Howe, are you going to jump in there?
Yeah, I, I guess my final thought on that is, is I rest on it is, I think the big question is, do we need to allow for the plus fifty-five? Is that appropriate for this, this proposal? And I think in the long term, we do have to think long term, whether the needs of the city today will meet those of tomorrow. And there are market forces and other things, and I think that that does limit, that does limit the flexibility of housing, which is very valuable right now, and probably will be in the future, to a certain age group. I think that that can be achieved through, um, um, the, the style and creation of the housing units. But I don't know if it's necessarily our decree to say the certain age can, can live in a certain location.
Okay, I'm gonna, one more note. Um, if you've done any work on Dr. Cog, Denver Regional Council of Governments, and they have forecasted that every single city, um, by twenty twenty is going to flip as far as, um, how many are fifty-five and older or sixty-five and older compared to those that are not? So, uh, if you look at, um, Arvada, Broomfield, um, Boulder, and Louisville, the aging population, if you, um, look it up on Dr. Cog, it is a fascinating study, and it's like, it's scary to even realize that, um, no, no city is prepared for the tsunami of, well, they call it the Silver Tsunami, tsunami of, um, the aging population and some of the, um, services that will be needed as housing as well. So just thought I'd throw that out there.
Thank you. Um, checking back with Commissioner Moline, uh, actually, I hadn't heard you accept that as a friendly amendment. Is that?
Well, sure, let's try it. Let's, let's, I'll, I'll accept that as a friendly amendment. We'll give it a shot and, and see what happens.
Okay, great. Thank you then. A roll call vote, please.
Okay. Commissioner Moline?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Hefner?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
No.
Commissioner Howe?
You're muted.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
And yes for Commissioner Howe. Commissioner Deal?
No.
Chair Bronis?
Yes. The motion carries. And next stop for them is city council.
All right, thank you, Commission. Do you, um, oh, Brian, you were muted if you were trying to chime in?
They're saying thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Checking in with you, Chair Bronis, if you want to take a quick break before we start on the next agenda item, or it should not take
I, I.
a significant amount of time.
Is everybody on the commission okay with kind of powering through? All right, excellent. Thank you very much. We can, uh, oh, yes, let me get back to my script here. I know it begins, I will now open. I will now open the public hearing on a request for a McDonald's PUD amendment, a request for approval of a planned unit development amendment to allow minor site modifications and signage changes. The purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the planning commission. The procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. First, there'll be a presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from the planning commission's staff. Next, we'll have a presentation and testimony by the applicant, followed by questions from the planning commission to the applicant. After these two presentations, members of the public who have joined this meeting by computer or telephone may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak is asked to use the raise hand function if participating by, paid in by computer or star nine. If calling in by telephone, comments may be limited to three minutes per person. The purpose of public comment is to receive public testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant and staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I will then close the public hearing, and no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. The planning commission will discuss the matter and may approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and address. Do we have proper notification?
Uh, that's correct, Commission. This was, this was properly noticed.
Thank you. And do any planning commissioners have any disclosures? Seeing none, uh, will you please, uh, make your presentation?
Sure, see if I can keep it short for rest of the night. All right, one sec. All right, good evening, Commissioners. Uh, my name's Ellie Hassan, and I'm planner two at the state of Louisville, and the item before you is the fourth PUD amendment for the McDonald's located at nine three nine West Dillon Road in Louisville. And just for some context, this property is located on the corner of Dillon Road and McCaslin Boulevard, and it's located within the Centennial Marketplace Shopping Center, which is part of the Centennial Valley General Development Plan. Uh, the site's about an acre in size, and there's an existing building, which is the McDonald's restaurant, and this property is part of the Planned Community Commercial Zone District. The original PUD for the site was approved in nineteen ninety-four and has been amended three times. The first two amendments were in two thousand and two and two thousand and five respectively. And there was a third amendment of a similar scope of work to this PUD, and that was administratively done in twenty nineteen, but was never developed. This proposal changes things up a little bit from that twenty nineteen amendment and proposes, um, a request for a drive-through improvement, which includes an extended queuing space and some renovated signage with the drive-through. There's also some pedestrian changes and ADA infrastructure on site that goes along with those renovations. And the applicants are also doing some existing building facade changes and adding some new wall signs. And as part of this proposal, there are six waivers that are requested, and they relate to sign code regulations, parking spaces, and some landscape requirements in the CD DSG. And these will be discussed later on in the presentation. So to start, one of the biggest changes in this PUD amendment is the drive-through infrastructure, which is being proposed to extend to allow greater customer volume, and that area is highlighted in red. And as part of this area, there are actually four parking spaces along this area that are proposed to be removed, as well as some existing landscaping in this location. And this area highlighted in blue showcases the new northern crosswalk connection between the restaurant and the existing Centennial Marketplace sidewalk connections. There are also some ADA ramps and infrastructure included as well. And as far as architectural changes go, this proposal does do some changes to the building's facade. The pictures on the left are existing conditions, and the right are the proposed changes. And the proposed material changes overall include metal louver, a metal louver screen on one elevation, an aluminum canopy, and a metal fascia on the roof trim to modernize it a little bit. And there are many areas around the building being repainted, and the color scheme is maintaining a muted color scheme as seen in the CD DSG. And on this west elevation at the top, the glazing's been reconfigured a little bit. There's a little less window surface. And on both the east and west elevations, there's a white aluminum canopy that's proposed along that glazing area. And on the east elevation specifically, there is a new, there are some new directional signage for their order area. On the north elevation, the existing wall sign's being removed, and they're replacing a metal louver screen on part of the existing glazing. And on the bottom, on the south elevation, it's staying roughly the same minus the overall changes to the building, and there's a new wall sign. And going into the waivers, the applicant is requesting some waivers from the CD DSG. And the first of these is for, is to propose twenty-two point four percent open space coverage, which is a reduction from the existing twenty-two point eight percent coverage, and thirty percent is required by code. The applicants propose some additional screening along Dillon roadside, which there's already some existing screening they're adding on to that, which makes up for the loss of landscape area on the site, and staff support this request is the most logical area for that landscaping. And the second waiver from the CD DSG is a parking space reduction. As mentioned for the drive-through, there, with that parking reduction, there is going to be a total of thirty-six spaces. And per the CD DSG for restaurant uses, it typically requires seventy-six spaces. And per the municipal code, there is a provision that allows city council to consider a reduction in the parking amount through specific factors, one of which includes parking needs of non-dwelling uses such as this site. And the site experience, and currently from a letter from the applicant, the site experience is about seventy-five percent of its sales through the drive-through, which causes a decreased demand for dine-in customer parking. So due to the specific parking needs that are proposed for the CEO, staff are supporting the request for a parking space reduction. It is also worth noting that the previous PD amendments for this McDonald's did rely on the municipal code's parking requirements, which are more lenient than the CD DSGs, and originally called for one space per three seats of dining. And the site has operated under this since the nineteen ninety-four PUD amendment. And as far as the sign code waivers go, the first one is the directional sign area allowance, where normally five square feet of sign area is allowed, and the applicants are proposing fourteen square feet. This sign that's shown here is a replacement for the gateway sign for the drive-through, which is highlighted in red on the site plan. And the rendering for that proposed structure is shown on the right. The sign shown to, the, the findings are that the sign meets the character of the renovated building and other signs on the site, and the overall mass is smaller than the existing can be signed, so staff supports the request to have the sign area and consolidate the sign. The next sign waiver is for the display signs, and per the sign code, each drive-through lane is allowed to have one sign, one of these signs. However, for the sign, for the program of the drive-through, they're proposing a small pre-brows menu board, which is seen at the top here, and then it, it's on this top elevation. And then they're also proposing a larger menu board further down near the ordering speakers. And these signs help accompany the str- the drive-through extension function by allowing customers to have more expedited time in that drive-through. And we find that it overall goes along with the theming of the site to be more modernized, and we support the request. There are also some waivers for the wall signs on the site, which involve both the number and the height of the wall signs. So per the sign code, the site is only allowed to have two wall signs. However, they are proposing three, and the signage staff believes helps advertise the site along Dillon Road, especially because the east and the west signs and the south sign as well are both located near there. And the east and west signs are located in kind of a similar spot to the existing PUD. Uh, for the second waiver, which is for the sign height, there's an increase from the allowed three feet to three points, to three feet, six inches. Uh, for the second waiver, which is for the sign height, there's an increase from the allowed three feet to three points, to three feet, six inches. And the only portion of the sign that's going into this area is the M portion of the McDonald's logo, which is seen on all three elevations and all three have that height of three foot, six inches. These signs otherwise conform to the sign area allowances for wall signs, so they're not increasing the area beyond what's allowed, it's just the height and the number of signs. And we also find that the locations are scaled appropriately for the building, they fit in pretty well on the facade, they're not as intrusive as potential sign designs could be. And because that staff supports the wave, both the waiver requests for the wall signs. So overall, our analysis finds that the application is in compliance with the Centennial Valley GDP since the use isn't changing. And we find that it is compliant with other regulations that regulate the site with the previously discussed waivers. And based on this information, staff are recommending the approval of Resolution fifteen, series twenty twenty-one. And that will conclude my presentation unless any commissioners have questions.
Thank you Ellie, Commissioner questions? Um, let me,
Yes.
Please go ahead.
Um, I'm not sure if you said this or not, but the additional sign is just the M logo, correct?
Um, so, yeah, that sign currently isn't on the site, there are similar McDonald's signs on these two elevations and this M logo is a brand new sign that hasn't previously been there.
Okay, so that's the third sign, correct?
That's correct.
Perfect, that's what I thought, thank you.
The additional Commissioner questions, Commissioner Hefner?
Yeah, I, I don't want to take up a lot of time with this, but could you just go over the changes to the facade again? I, I think I missed what, what the actual changes are.
Sure, so one of the big ones is they are repainting the building, so right now, I forget the name of the color that's existing on the PUD, but they're changing it to this like kind of top color, this, it's more of a darker brown than what's existing, and there's some other smaller paint trim changes. Uh, they're adding just some slight architectural accent pieces, I would consider them to be, so there's some, there's these two new little canopies that come out over here on the east and west side.
Okay.
And then on the north side, they have an existing, so they had an existing third wall sign over here that they're getting rid of. And over the play place glazing, they're putting a metal louver structure along with another one of those white canopies. And then on the south side, there's nothing too significant besides the recoloring in the wall sign.
Got it, thank you.
Oh, Commissioner Deal?
Yeah, thanks Ellie, great presentation. Um, can you quick over the screen, the additional screening on Dillon?
Sure, so actually, let me see, it may be easier for me to have it, I have it in the PUD amendment and it's actually easier to see on here. So along Dillon, sorry, I'll take a second. So along Dillon currently, there's this area over here by the sidewalk that has a gap in the screening. And they're proposing to fill that gap basically with some more ornamental grasses, bushier trees, or bushier shrubs over on this side towards Dillon. And as staff, we believe that this actually is really helpful to the site and it's, the site's a little constrained because it has this mature landscaping area all around it. And we found that this area is probably the only area they could realistically enhance a little bit more on the site. Uh, and also just given that there is an extension of this drive-through use and they're anticipating and already currently having a lot of use, users through there, it'll help screen the drive-through a little bit better from Dillon as well.
Yep, nope, agree, thank you.
The additional Commissioner questions? Not seeing any, then invite the applicant up to present, begin with your name and address, please.
Sorry, I'm gonna get on a share screen as well.
Uh, great, thanks.
Actually, you can, you can keep that same site plan up Ellie, if you, if you would.
Oh, sure, yeah, let me go ahead.
Yeah, this Robert Palmer Strategic Land Solutions, uh, for McDonald's tonight, seventy-two or eighty-two thirty-five cotton grass. Frank Towne, Colorado, eight zero.
Uh, Mr. Palmer, your audio is cutting in and out on us. Oops.
Appreciate Ellie's presentation, she did a good job, she's been a, the, the city staff's been a pleasure to work with and kind of work through some of these, these, these issues and, um, it's, it's a little bit of a unique site, we've got a city zoning code and then we've got, uh, overlay on, on top of that, those part of the original development. The, I'll address the, the, the drive-through portion of it first. Essentially what, sorry. Illusion?
I, I think we can still hear you at this point.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I'm not, I'm not seeing the Zoom part, I guess it's still up and I can't, I can't see what, what's on the screen, but, um, I will just go through the, through the project, so with the drive-through additions, the loss of the, the four parking spaces, what we're trying to accomplish is, is a, uh, a facility that's wor, operates more efficiently than it does now, the, the issue that we're having right now is that during peak hours, traffic is backing up through the parking lot. And so even though we're losing four parking spaces, we feel that the new drive-through configuration will actually allow traffic to get through that, pull it off of the main drive aisle and allow the parking to work, uh, work better than it is now. We, we're just having an issue that during peak times with the traffic backed up, we have people sitting in their cars that can't get out. Um, and you can't get out of their parking spaces, so if they can't change over and, and get out and new people get in, it's just a very inefficient operation right now, so the double drive-through lane is meant to open up that drive lane, let the existing parking work more effectively and then at the same time, it allows us to, to queue those customers and to offer, to service them better as well, just being able to get, get their orders in and, and will leave pressure on the parking lot. So the four parking spaces, uh, we, we do feel that, that even though we're losing parking, the actual parking lot's going to work better and we're going to have less congestion in it. And then it, uh, it's only commented earlier, where we've, we've been operating over the, since, basically since this restaurant's been, been opened as, with the parking code that, that's part of the city code, which is one for, one parking space for three spaces, so using that configuration, we would, we would, we would have enough parking uh, with, with the seating that, that we're proposing. So we feel that, like I said, even though the parking, we're losing four parking spaces, that the parking lot's going to operate much more efficiently. And then the building facade changes is part of an ongoing, uh, ongoing program that McDonald's has to keep their, the restaurants fresh, uh, to keep them up to date and modern, so, you know, in the past where we've had, where people, you know, the louvers on the front of the building, we don't do that anymore, just because what we're seeing is more people are appreciating the open glazing and being able to, to have just that pedestrian act, that pedestrian exchange, uh, to be able to see inside and, and like I said, the increased glazing on the buildings. And so the signage kind of goes along with all those changes, it's McDonald's modern signage, um, you know, the sign package that goes along with their, the look for their buildings and the modernization of all their buildings, uh, uh, we just don't want to get into a situation where we've got old buildings out there and I think, I think the city can appreciate that as well. Uh, so like Ellie mentioned, we're not asking for any additional signage, signage on it, we're just addition, or additional signage for footage, we're just asking for a little bit, for an extra sign on it. And then we've got a part of, also part of the modernization as we go on into restaurants, we look at ADA access and accessibility and pedestrian accessibility, so part of this is to, to, uh, make it an accessible spa, accessible access from the adjacent street at the front of the restaurant, uh, that's in a safe location, it's not going through the drive-through area, it's, it's a very usable space, and again, that's, uh, part of that modernization. Being able to afford better access for that, for pedestrians and for mobility, mobility, accessible, um, access for, for people with mobility issues. And then the, on the, as far as the drive-through signage goes, one of the reasons we're asking for a little bit larger signage, a little bit larger sign on the, the allowable menu board is, our menu boards operate what, so they're not just a menu board, but also inside that menu board, it has a little area that shows your order so that you can see that, you know, that the order's correct and, and you're getting what you ordered. So we're not asking really for more square footage to put more things on the, you know, to advertise more on those, those menu boards, we're looking for the extra additional area to be able to show the customer orders and, and make sure that, you know, our customer satisfaction is maintained. And I think that's really all unless you guys have, unless there's any specific questions, I don't want to burn a bunch of time.
Thank you very much, Commissioner questions of the applicant? Double checking here. Seeing none. I will then, um, open up public comment. With, uh,
Chair Brice, I see no members of the public in attendance at this point.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Uh, do you have any closing statement, Mr. Palmer?
No, sir.
All right, thank you, staff response and closing statement?
Uh, I don't really have too much to add, but thank you for reviewing this item.
Thank you very much, I'll now close the public hearing and the planning commission will deliberate on the evidence presented. During deliberations, no further public comment or testimony or evidence will be received. Uh, can I have a volunteer to begin our discussion? Commissioner Deal?
Yeah, I think it's a very nice upgrade and appreciate, uh, the detail went into it, appreciate the additional screenage on Dillon Road and I'm fully in support.
Thank you very much. Okay, let me just call off names, Vice Chair Hefner?
Uh, I, I agree with what was just said, thanks everyone.
Um, Commissioner Howe?
Yeah, I think the building, uh, is, is ready for an upgrade, I think that it's going to modernize the building and, and be a good improvement for that area of the city, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams?
I think these are all improvement upgrades, so I'll be in support as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Moline.
Uh, same as, same as every, all the other commissioners have mentioned, I'll be in support, appreciate it, thank you.
And I also find myself in support of the application and, uh, particularly with the kind of refreshed landscape as well. I call for a motion, please.
Okay. Move for the approval of Resolution number fifteen, series twenty twenty-one. Resolution recommending approval of a planned unit development amendment to allow for the construction of exterior site renovations with waivers, including the removal of parking spaces, installation of new signage, exterior architectural changes, and expanded drive-through infrastructure.
And a second.
A second.
Thank you, uh, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hefner?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Howe?
Yes.
Commissioner Deal?
Yes.
Commissioner Moline?
Yes.
Chair Brice?
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate everybody's participation in it. Uh, then we move on to any planning commission comments and opportunity for planning commissioners to share any ideas, thoughts, typically unrelated to our agenda items, but go ahead.
Uh, yes, um, I just wanted to, um, let you all know that, um, I am moving on. December is my last meeting, if we have a December meeting, um, I don't know at this moment, um, maybe Lisa can tell us. Um, but I've enjoyed working with you all for the last, I think it's been four years, maybe, is it four or five? I'm not, I've lost track of time, um, and, uh, I've really enjoyed my time, uh, serving, um, on this body, I've, I, I did the Board of Adjustments before this, um, for Louisville and, um, oh my God, I have been in local city government advisory groups, city council, um, Dr. Cog for four years, uh, Rocky Flats Coalition, um, it, I, I can't even name half of these things, uh, since two thousand and four, so, um, I've been giving my time away for free for a very long time, I've enjoyed it. Um, I've lived in, um, pretty much every city in Boulder County at this point and served on one of those kinds of, um, advisory groups, so, um, I kind of just need to sort of move on and focus on something else at the moment, I have some other endeavors that I'm, um, working on and, um, you will see me again someday, that's for sure. Can't, can't leave for very long.
That's wonderful, I, I do appreciate, um, uh, how much public service you've, you've provided um, this world and, and, uh, encourage, uh, others to be more like you on that level and, and giving their time for free as you pointed out.
Maybe not encourage them, I mean, almost twenty years, a little long, I mean, do, uh, please do, um, you know, I encourage, um, folks to get on an advisory committee or some kind of committee for a few years, but don't do twenty.
Excellent, well, thank you very much, you will be missed.
Great to serve with you, Deb.
Indeed. Yeah, thank, thanks very much, Commissioner Williams.
And as well with you all, I enjoyed it.
Absolutely.
I hope we get one more meeting out of you.
Well, so Lisa, do we have anything coming in?
Yeah, no, that's a great segue, but I too also want to express my appreciation and, and, you know, we had the pleasure of working with each other in two jurisdictions, which, you know, isn't that common? So we worked together before and it's fair here and now here, so you will be missed and I appreciate all of the time and dedication that you have given to both communities, so, um, with that,
Back at you.
Thanks.
I have a quick, I have a quick something before we jump in, can I, can I say something? Yeah, uh, obviously, uh, thank you so much, Commissioner Williams, you and I joined the, joined the commission at the same time, so I've always valued your thoughts and opinions, thank you very much.
I, on a second topic, and, and I'm not sure exactly, um, how to, how to go about this, but um, at the risk of shaking an unopened soda can, um, I would like to humbly request this planning staff consider organizing a tour of the grounds for the commissioners if, if, and I, and I have not followed this proposal, I don't know the status of the proposal in question, but if the storage tech, Conoco Phillips Redtail proposal were to, um, require any future deliberations, so I just want to throw that out there way ahead of time, I, I don't know what the status of it is, but something maybe that you could consider to, to help us in those deliberations.
I appreciate you putting that on the record and, um, we'll certainly keep that in mind as if and how and when this moves forward, so thank you for bringing that up.
Any, so she says, there's a, somebody with a handbrake, Rick Hill.
He's on the applicant team for the McDonald's application, so
Okay.
Ellie will connect with him, the public hearing's closed at this time, so I think it might be kind of residual.
Yeah, okay, because I saw his video was playing earlier, but, all right, um, any additional planning commission comments?
Lisa, what do we have for December?
Sure, so yeah, moving on to kind of next items on deck, we have a couple of applications that are waiting in the wings, we're not sure if they are, um, going to be quite ready, um, Amelia's been working on an application for a GDP amendment in Centennial Valley, so you might hear from her as a staff presenter, which is a new fun role for her for a while. Um, and then we have North End, Block eleven is kind of floating out there, that one seems more unlikely, but, um, public notice deadline is next Wednesday for the December meeting, so, um, if we don't have a meeting, we will let you know um, by late next week, the status of that, um, December meeting. Um, so that's all we have for that, um, and yeah, as noted, we only have one more meeting with Commissioner Williams potentially, thank you for those of you who reapplied to serve on planning commission, so was really happy to see those applications come in. Um, we will have at least two new members, city council will be having those discussions, um, in early December on, um, appointments, and so as soon as we hear, um, if you've been reappointed and then who our new members are, we'll certainly reach out to you, but that, those decisions um, sometimes can move into January, so, um, we'll keep you posted on that. Um, and then just one quick update too on the Redtail application, since that's been, you know, a point of discussion, um, the referendum petition did gather the signatures required to trigger council reconsideration, so December seventh, the application will be coming back. the application will be coming back in front of city council for reconsideration. And if they withdraw their approval, then it defaults back to the ConocoPhillips G D P, the existing G D P on the books. If they decide to let their decision stand, it will go to a special election. For now, that's looking like the March, more likely April timeframe, um, for the special election. So that could be lingering for quite a while, that the, um, kind of final outcome of that.
Is there, um, can you share the, the wording of the petition and would that have any bearing on the wording of the ballot initiative?
Um, so basically I don't have the language of the petition in front of me, but it's not conditional. It's basically the intent of the petition is to overturn the approval of the ordinance. So it relates directly to, you know, I think it's ordinance eighteen sixteen. It doesn't say something to the effect of like, we want to reduce the commercial square footage from three million to two point seven. There's no conditionality to it. It's just simply an overturn of the approval. So that's really, it's kind of a thumbs up, thumbs down, yes, no.
And would that have to be the required language on the initiative or?
So the ballot language, that's a good question. Um, there are very, you know, strong requirements around ballot language. We haven't gotten to that point yet with the city attorney. But, um, as soon as we have that developed, I'll certainly share it with you as an update.
And would we be precluded from voting?
Um, that's a good question. I, we will confirm that information for you. I don't know offhand if as a commission, um, you're precluded at this point or not, but we'll give you legal advice.
Okay.
I didn't give up my vote when I signed up for the commission, so. I, I would expect that the city attorney would come out with something like that, but I don't know.
Yeah, well, we'll make sure that.
Just franchise somebody.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions? I don't have any other staff updates at this time. All right. Again, thanks for all your thoughtfulness, everyone.
Excellent.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Yep. All right. Thank you, guys.
Yep.
Washington adjourned.